Happy Birthday.
Yes.
Why can't he see it? He's a good man. Any old guy that plays football corrupts you. Why? I told him, I'm gonna take it up with Irish right now. Because there's no reason. Can we steer our bodies?
Hi, how are you?
Good morning. How are you? Always a pleasure to meet you and nice to see you.
Well, first of all.
Oh, no.
Oh, she says ever?
Well, recent.
I'll get off the channel seven eight, she gets married. But she says, well, why don't you tell me? Well, how about it? There's no reason.
So I thought Matt was... Oh, he's Matt, is that Matt?
Yeah, that's Matt.
Okay.
No, there's no reason that she should be able to get...
Yeah, I understand.
Even if she wanted.
We'll have to find out, I don't know.
We'll hook up with Matt and see what the deal is.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Mr. Corin, happy birthday.
Absolutely.
There's no other way.
As often as I can.
Sir, there's no other way.
No.
No, where can I go? I can give it to you.
Several days down.
Up.
Several days down.
I think so. She's not worse, I don't know what's happening. I'll give her, I'll give her address right now.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February fifteenth Commission Meeting. Marlene, Madam Clerk, can you please call the role?
Good evening. Commissioner Good.
Here.
Commissioner Good. I'm here. Vice Mayor Schwartz.
Here.
Commissioner Cykel.
I'm here.
Mayor Warden.
Here.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Senator.
Here.
City Attorney Gordon.
I'm here.
We have a call.
Okay, I'd like to have everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And we're gonna have, if I could request Chief Kip Chimpano will lead us.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mayor?
Yes.
You have the floor, sir. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, good evening all. This is a very tough time for our city. We are hurting, we're sad, we are shocked. As mayor, I hope such a day when we lost one of our own would never come. Officer Charles Herring is the first officer in our city's history to die in the line of duty. A Pembroke Pines police officer for twenty-two years. He died last Thursday while on duty in a tragic motorcycle accident. Words cannot properly express what we are all feeling, and it provide little comfort to his family, friends, and colleagues. But please know, they were all deeply shared in your heartache from everyone I've spoken to about Officer Herring. I learned that he could light up a room with a smile and make those around him laugh and enjoy life, all of which are qualities to make a great police officer. So please join me now as we pay our respect to the great police officer Charles Herring with a moment of silence. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor. Colleagues, if you, if you'd like to say anything about Officer Herring, just let me know. Officer Herring was an integral part of our community, deeply involved in the Citizens Police Academy, where he touched thousands of lives. From our Pines Day to our Pines Night Out, there are literally thousands of photos of him and his motorcycle with children. Two of those children are mine. My boys are deeply saddened by his loss and will be attending services this, in the next several days. On behalf of the Schwartz family, I extend my condolences to the Herring family and let them know that, yes, Officer Herring is a hero. Colleagues, we have a presentation that we're going to, from Commissioner Cykel. Commissioner Cykel, you have the floor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. While I was listening to newscaster Glennon Milberg on her weekly TV show, This Week in South Florida, and heard the Channel Ten news reporter LeAnn Mutter-Hohn mention the word Marine, and of course, that caught my attention. I have shared with, with you all how proud Mark and I are of our grandson Alex Rodriguez, who is a Marine and is in Virginia right now receiving his intel training. I watched the entire segment and wanted to learn more about the Monfort Point Marines of the nineteen forties. While the segment talked about that early group of Marines, it focused on a local Monfort Point Marine Corporal George Johnson. The following day, he was honored at the African-American Library in Fort Lauderdale. He was awarded the Gold Medal of Honor for his service. Unfortunately, Corporal Johnson could not attend our meeting tonight. He is a hundred and one years old, and he was just a little tired. We hear a lot about the Tuskegee Airmen and their contributions to our country's freedom, but no one seems to know much about the Monfort Point Marines. The story behind these Marines is a very interesting part of our country's military history. I was able to make contact with a granddaughter of a Monfort Marine, Ms. Mallory Berger. And she is here with us tonight and will share more about this group of almost twenty thousand soldiers and her perseverance and determination to find the families of these soldiers and make sure they receive their well-earned medals, respect, and their place in history. You're gonna see a short video and a few pictures about Monfort that was designed and shown on YouTube by ABC as well as Walt Disney Corporation. After the, the video and the pictures that you see, I'm gonna ask Ms. Berger if she'll come up for a couple of minutes and explain a little bit more about the Monfort Point Marines. So, City Clerk, if you could run the video, please.
The combat Marine Corps asked publicly if there was a choice of two hundred fifty thousand blacks or five thousand whites. His response was, I'd rather take the white. The Monfort Point Marines were a project. They were allowed into the Marine Corps to prove that they could not be Marines.
For a long time, the guys who served tried to tell everybody our story, but nobody was listening.
The Marine Corps didn't want you to know. It's just that simple. When you say Tuskegee Airmen, nine out of ten people know who you're talking about. We don't have that luxury of Monfort Point, but that is the objective, to get their story told to the point that it's a common story. Monfort Point Marines, we all stand in seduction. Forgive it, not being asked for doing what was right and true.
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain seated for the presentation of the Gold Medal.
Here's the medal, pretty amazing. There are still eighteen thousand individuals or family members that don't know the story, that don't know that there's an honor awaiting their loved ones.
Pretty soon, the last Monfort Point Marine will take their final breath. My mission is to make sure every member gets a medal.
Want a lawn that looks like this? Well, your lawn looks a little bit more like this. And you should click right here and check out True Green. Where the local lawn takes first a guaranteed result.
Can you go to the next, there was a couple more pictures? Madam Clerk. There we go. Thank you, thank you. So I'm gonna ask Ms. Berger to come up to the podium and speak a little bit. But the, the real purpose of this and her purpose, which you will hear, is what you just heard in this story, that there are eighteen thousand families that have not been found yet, if you will, that their, their relatives fought for this country and should be recognized and should receive the medals that they are due. And that is not, that is not happening. And in this, you know, in this great country and in our city here, we really pay such homage to our veterans and are so respectful of what they have done and what they have given to, to us. We take every opportunity to, to thank them for the service that they did. And this just seems to be a group that was sort of lost a little bit, if you will. So, Ms. Berger, if you would, please, there's a, there's a button you need to push. It says speak, I think it says, and the light will come on. There you go. And you need to say who you are and your address, and then your presentation, please.
My name is Mallory Berger. I live in Coral Springs, Florida, ninety fifty-four northwest Thirty-Ninth Street in Coral Springs, Florida. And I'm here tonight to talk about the Monfort Point Marines. That is my grandfather. I come from a family of men who fought for this country. My grandfather, actually, my great-great uncle was a Buffalo soldier who fought in the Spanish-American War. He was Troop E, Tenth Cavalry. And his nephew is my grandfather, Maurice Burns. Private Maurice L. Burns, Senior. He is a Monfort Point Marine and Congressional Gold Medal recipient. I didn't know what a Monfort Point Marine was until 2021. About, I think it was October, November of 2021. Never heard the term, never heard the words. My grandfather never spoke about his time in the service. I knew he had served in the service, but I believed he was Army. My dad served in the Army, my uncle served in the Army. And I only knew he had served in, in the military because of these photographs that I had of him. And one night, I was up, one o'clock in the morning. You know, COVID has just screwed up everybody's sleep patterns. And so I was on a website called Black Southern Belle looking for some new southern traditions to celebrate the holidays with. And the first story that popped up was a story from 2017 about the Monfort Point Marines. And I like to think that was my grandfather's possibly divine intervention because I wasn't looking for anything about the military. Nevertheless, I read the story. It talked about these twenty thousand black men that integrated the Marine Corps, how difficult it was for them. And because of their difficulties, they were awarded a Congressional, a collective Congressional Gold Medal in 2012. The first group of the Monfort Point Marines in 2012, I think there was about four hundred and fifty-eight, they were awarded a bronze replica. And since 2012, the Monfort Point Marine Association had been looking for the remaining Monfort Pointers or their, their families or their descendants so that they could also award those family members a bronze replica of the Congressional Gold Medal. So I contacted the National Monfort Point Marine Association. I sent this photograph of my grandfather. I had a photograph of what they call the Blue Book, which is the military or the Marine Corps yearbook, which is very rare. And I sent copies of those to the National Monfort Point Marine Association at one o'clock in the morning. And the next day, I woke up to look for my grandfather's photographs and any memorabilia that he had saved from his days at Monfort Point. And I'm reading letters that he had written to the VA. He had difficulty in getting medical coverage from the VA, which I thought was incredible because he had served and he had earned that medical coverage. And he had to track down his drill instructor from twenty-six years prior to ask him to help him to get medical coverage for some injuries that he had sustained during boot camp. So as I'm reading these letters, Joe Geter, who's the national PR officer for the Monfort Point Marine Association, contacted me, I think it was maybe ten o'clock the next morning. And he said, Mallory, I got your, I got your message. He said, let's get your grandfather the Congressional Gold Medal. So I received my grandfather's medal February nineteenth of last year. And ironically, I had a childhood friend who was a retired combat Marine. And I called him and I said, Reggie, you'll get a kick out of this. And I start telling him about the story. And he said, Mallory, I think my grandfather was a Monfort Point Marine as well. And I'm thinking, what is the likelihood of two kids that grew up together in Little Marion, Indiana, in the Midwest, having grandfathers that both served at Monfort Point Camp? Well, he was, he was right. His grandfather was also a Monfort Point Marine. So we received the medals together. And when I got back home to Florida, I'm looking at this medal, and I just said, something's not right. If there are still eighteen thousand medals to be awarded, we've gotta do something. So Reggie and I reached out to everybody that we could think of, any news outlet, anywhere my grandfather lived, anywhere Reggie's grandfather lived, General Motors. I reached out to them, and they were beautiful. They responded and they did, they, they awarded Reggie's grandfather. They had a ceremony in Flint, Michigan to award his family an award for his grandfather's service. But we really weren't getting the traction. And so one day Reggie calls me and he said, Mallory, I'm gonna reach out to Latandra. She's another childhood friend. And she just happens to be the chief diversity officer for the Walt Disney Company. And Latandra got the message, and she was dumbfounded. She says, how is this possible that there were twenty thousand black men that integrated the Marine Corps during World War II, and nobody has heard of them? Nobody's heard of these men. So she immediately reached out to Deborah O'Connell. And then Deborah O'Connell with ABC reached out to, to executive producers with their race and cultural content team. And Reggie and I met with them, and they began trying to figure out, well, what do we do with this story? So they began covering a lot of the medal presentations in Philadelphia and in the New York area. And then someone had the brilliant idea, let's do a documentary. So they began filming the documentary, and the documentary dropped September twentieth. So that was the trailer that you all saw. You can find the documentary on YouTube, on Hulu. It's on Amazon Prime. It's on thirty-three, I believe, streaming platforms. You can also find it on the internet. Not knowing that my grandfather served and did something so significant at, you know, as integrating the Marine Corps has been mind-blowing to me. I don't believe he realized what he was doing. And, and clearly, none of the other men that served knew what they were doing. I mean, they were literally some of the first civil rights activists, and they didn't know that. I've talked to probably over two hundred families because now this has become my sole purpose in life. Or one of my, I shouldn't say that, my husband sitting over here. But that has become...
Truth comes out.
And he's letting me do this. He's, he's been so supportive. But this has been, this has been a driving force for me over the last year. And I actually search for the families. So I find muster rolls and I track down families. And it's, and right now, one of the projects I'm working on is finding all of the thirty-three men or their families who served with my grandfather. One of the men is in the picture with, the picture with the group photograph, Mr. George McIvory. He is ninety-seven years old. He's the little one in the front left corner, left, yeah. That's Mr. McIvory. He lives in Jacksonville, Florida. And so I've been, I've been able to track down about ten of the families. Two of those families have received the Congressional Gold Medal, bronze replica. The other eight families had no idea either that there was this bronze replica that they were eligible to receive or that their father or their grandfather actually served in the military. So what a surprise when you get a phone call from me and they've never heard, they think I'm like scamming them or something. And I said, well, let me email you a photograph of your grandfather in my grandfather's platoon, and it just blows their minds. So in August, on August twenty-fifth will be the annual, actually, it's the eighty-first, eighty-first anniversary of Monfort Point Camp. And it is the annual medal presentation. And that's when the Marine Corps gives all the pomp and circumstance to the families as they award the medals. So for my grandfather's platoon, we'll have ten families, as of today, we'll have ten families from his unit that will receive the medal. Last year, we had eleven families awarded. As of today, we have thirty-one medals that will be given on August twenty-fifth. So I wanna thank you for giving me this opportunity to talk about Monfort Point. It's incredibly important because there are so many all-black units that served during World War II outside of the Buffalo Soldiers and the Tuskegee Airmen, and they're just now beginning to be recognized. And it's incredibly important that we tell these stories because if we don't, they'll be lost to history. Thank you.
Well, I just, I wanna thank you for, for coming and colleagues. So it's one of those stories, I guess, that you say, spread the word around, talk, start talking about it, let people know that it is a, a big part of Marine history, but it is a big part of this country's history and, and men that, that fought, excuse me, that fought for the freedoms that we all talk about, that we enjoy so much up here. And just the fact that they are sort of unknown in this day and age kind of a thing is, is a little bit crazy. But I, I, again, I, I just wanna thank you. And, and, and I know you said he let you do it.
He does.
I, I would use a different word. I would say he helps you do it.
He supports me.
He supports you, that's a good thing. So, thank you, thank you. Because I'm sure it takes a lot of your time at one and two and three AM when you're doing a lot of stuff, but, but it needs to happen. It's a, it's a very significant part of our history, and it certainly needs to happen. And again, my, my little Marine A-Rod, you know, I hear the word Marine, and there we go. So, thank you again.
Can I point out one thing really quickly? If you, if you go to the photograph of Corporal George Johnson, our one-hundred-and-one-year-old Monfort Pointer? There you go.
That's him.
The gentleman to the left handing him the certificate of service, that is a two-star general. That is Major General James W. Monroe. He's lived in Florida. And I thought this picture just, the general, and George kept trying to get up to salute him.
And, and George Johnson is our hundred-and-one-year-old.
He's our hundred-and-one-year-old. And he kept trying to get up to support, to salute the general. And he just bent over and he told him, he said, even though I'm in the Army or was in the Army, he said, it is because of you that I was able to do what I did.
Very inspirational. Thank you so much, Ms. Berger. Thank you so much, Ms. Berger. We, we do appreciate it. Colleagues, we appreciate it.
Yeah, Ms. Berger, thank you so much. Commissioner Seiple, thank you so much for bringing this forward. As a city of Pembroke Pines, we are a, uh, we are a city that supports, um, uh, our veterans and, um, and our active service members. Um, what, what, what I can see, uh, perhaps, um, either through the mayor, Commissioner Seiple at the Florida League, um, certainly through the Broward League, I'd like to see if we can package this presentation and distribute, uh, to the, you know, to the over 400 cities here in Florida. Because we need to have this thing literally go viral. Time is of the essence, especially for those who, who are over 100 years old to, to get the proper recognition. I'd love to be able to see us.
We're just not going to be around much longer to, to do. And those that aren't here, their families still need to know and, and, and be honored and respected that way. That's the, that's the group I talked to you about that we want to reach out to. So we, we'll have more conversations.
Okay.
Fantastic. Okay, colleagues, Commissioner Good.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Appreciate that. I, uh, I just want to say, um, that I really love the fact that you wear proud granddaughter over your heart.
It's Miss Bell, so don't. It's a long story.
It clearly communicates what you intended. So it's, it's a very wonderful thing. If, if we're moment, we can go back to the Marine there, the young Marine.
Oh, my grandfather?
Your grandfather. I, I just have to ask, has anybody ever said to you that you look like your grandfather?
Well, I look just like my mom. So yeah, that's my mom's father, so yeah.
I mean, you're, you're doing your grandfather proud by carrying his features very strongly. I just want you to know, you really have a great resemblance here. And I'm very, uh, very proud of you for, uh, presenting your grandfather in this way and making sure that his memory stays alive as well as Monford Point Marines. Thank you very much for what you're doing and serving this country.
Commissioner Castillo?
Thank you very much. I want to thank you for your presentation and thank you, Commissioner Seiple, for bringing it forward. There are forces in our community that want to, uh, erase black history and the teaching of it to our kids. The, the story of these Marines belongs in a movie. It belongs in books, uh, not just YouTube. And maybe that should be the thing. I have to tell you that, uh, I learned about the Tuskegee Airmen through movies. There was nothing written in my educational background that I came across that. I, I, I came to understand that story through movies. And this is a story that demands a movie. Uh, and hopefully, and hopefully that will happen. But making sure that kids know the history of the United States is only partly the job of, uh, of schools. We as parents and as communities must teach them those things that they will learn in school. And that's always been true. I remember my father teaching me many things, uh, in my immigrant family that, uh, I did not learn in school. But I learned them just the same. And our kids will continue to learn the things that they need to do, uh, know. Because there's a very, very proud history out there to be taught and beyond the history lessons that, uh, some of them should be remembered, some of them shouldn't be revisited. So thank you very much for coming forward. Very much appreciated every word you said.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Berger. We'll, we'll talk some more later.
Um, Madam Clerk, uh, do we have any announcements, uh, items to be pulled from the agenda?
No items, Vice Mayor.
Items at the request of the public?
No items at the request of the public.
Commit, Commission Auditor Report?
None, Vice Mayor.
Appeals of the Board of Adjustment?
None, Vice Mayor.
Okay, I have two, uh, board appointments, uh, to the Charter Review Board. Uh, the, my pleasure to appoint a gentleman who, uh, is my longest-serving appointee for all the citizen boards, uh, Mr. Paul Gerillo. Uh, Paul has been a resident of our city for many, many decades. He understands the, uh, the history of our city. He certainly is passionate about, uh, making things right. And, and I know he's going to be an absolutely wonderful addition to the board. My second appointment is my newest, uh, my latest appointment, uh, to the Board of Adjustment, actually. And that's Victor Abendem Delandolo, who is, um, who is a retired police officer. And he is a, uh, currently he's a bailiff down in Miami-Dade County. And he represents, uh, thousands of police officers, um, within our community. And he will bring certainly not only the history and his love and passion for the city of Pembroke Pines, uh, but also, uh, a, a viewpoint, uh, to make sure that we're an all-inclusive, uh, community when it comes to Charter Review Board. And I look forward to seeing, uh, seeing both men, uh, serving. I believe that there is a, um, same manager. I believe there is an organizational meeting, uh, sometime towards the end of this month. Uh, so I look forward to hearing those results. Uh, colleagues, moving to the consent agenda.
Vice Mayor, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Before we get on the consent agenda, could I have a moment, please?
Absolutely, Commissioner Seiple.
Thank you so much. Um, first off, I'm, everybody, we, we know that, um, February 14th came and, and went. And, um, always in years past, February 14th was a pretty happy day and a pretty full of love day and, and, and all of that. Um, but unfortunately, a few years ago for our, for our communities, February 14th took on a second meaning. And, um, uh, not a good one, not a good, not a good remembrance. And so we have always had here, um, um, at the city of Pembroke Pines, we've held a candlelight vigil on February 14th out, uh, out here in our, in our plaza. But this year we decided that we would, um, change it around just a little bit. And I just want to thank, um, uh, Marian Woolard and, and Mr. Keford and, and that for putting together, they put together the most beautiful video, uh, showing, uh, individual pictures of each of the 17 lives that were lost with a, a little, you know, a little story about each one of them. Um, you know, the, for the younger ones, you know, what their future was going to hold for them, what they were looking forward to doing. And for the adults that were, that were tragically murdered, um, the loss to their families, what it was. So that was, we ran that on the city website at 8:00 AM on February 14th. And it is out there still. And I would ask that each of you at some point, you know, take a minute and, and go on the website and, and see it and listen to it. Um, it is, it is very, um, it's a very beautiful, uh, video. And I think very fitting for our city to remember, um, that tragedy in, in such a, such a beautiful way. So please take, take your time and go out and, and, and look at that on the city's website. Um, also I wanted to remind everybody that our Raising Positive Children, our next forum is March 2nd. It's right here at City Hall, starting at 6:30. And it, the title of this one is called Tapping Into Your Parent Superpowers. So it's, um, it's very, uh, it's a very interesting topic. And we are pleased to have, um, our own Dr. Laura Cruz, who will be spearheading the, the meeting for us and talking about, um, some very unique and different issues that our families are saying that they are dealing with now. So we look forward to that. Again, Raising Positive Children, March 2nd, right here at City Hall at 6:30. And you do not have to sign up. You do not have to register. Um, but, uh, there will be a QR code for those that are entitled for service hours and, and that stuff. So, um, and then one last thing, Mayor, Vice Mayor?
Sure.
Last year, as part of March's Women's History Month celebration, at my request, the city of Pembroke Pines invited Pembroke Pines residents to nominate a special woman in their life who personifies the vital role women play, not only in American history, but in our everyday lives. They are our sheros. An annual event, we'd like to once again encourage you to nominate a special woman in your life and explain in no more than 300 words why she is a shero. And email your nomination to pinesmedia@pines.com by March 31st at 9:00 PM. All entries will be read and women nominated will be honored at an April commission meeting. And you can find all the details for this on our website at www.pines.com. There are heroes all around us and please share with us the sheros in your life. The women doctors, teachers, police officers, firefighters, nurses, moms and soldiers. So we may recognize their effort. Women's History Month began as a natural, uh, as a national celebration in 1981 when Congress passed resolutions designating a week in March as Women's History Week. In 1987, after being petitioned by the National Women's History Project, which is now known as the National Women's History Alliance, Congress passed a resolution designating the entire month of March as Women's History Month. It celebrates women's accomplishments and contributions and is also a chance to reflect on the trailblazing women who lead the way for a change. The 2023 Women's History Month theme is about celebrating women who tell our stories, calling special attention to those who are devoted to pursuing truth, one story at a time. So I thank you for that. And, uh, Vice Mayor, just as a bit of information, for those of you who watched the Super Bowl, you may have noticed that this year was the first ever all-female piloted flyover as the opening of the game. First time ever. It's about time that they recognize women pilots are able to do all that stuff. So, uh, again, please, Women's History Month, March is Women's History Month. Go to the, the city website and nominate that special woman in your life. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. And the, uh, the gentleman who, um, orchestrated the flyover, a Flanagan graduate.
Yep. Sorry, say that again.
He's a Flanagan graduate.
That's true.
But even more than that, his mom works right here in this building.
Uh, I know that for a fact. Look there, there's another very special woman, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, colleagues, uh, going to the consent agenda, are there any polls?
No polls.
Number three.
Number three. Hearing, uh, and it's going to be for items one through 10. So three is polled for, uh, for Commissioner Good. We have a motion by Commissioner Castillo. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Seiple. Uh, the city clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Seiple?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Horden?
Okay, item three, Commissioner Good.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. So motion to approve purchase installation of playground equipment at Paul J. Maxwell Park from Playcore, Wisconsin Corporation DBA Game Time Care of Dominica Recreation Products, Inc. in the amount not to exceed 149,981.51 cents utilizing pricing established by the Omnia Partners Public Sector, formerly US Communities Government Purchasing Alliance, contract number 2017001134, pursuant to section 35.18, print C, print six of the city's code ordnance.
Second, second by Commissioner Castillo. Commissioner Good.
I, uh, can I ask staff to give a brief presentation on this, please? And, and while you're coming up to speak to this item, are there any, uh, renderings of what this new playground equipment would look like?
Yes, sir. Christina Sorenson, Director of Recreation and Culture Arts. There should be renderings attached the city clerk can bring up. So this playground is in Maxwell Park and, um, this playground is, the current playground that exists there has been on the list of playgrounds to replace for quite some time. The, we budgeted for this, I'm going to say it was over three years ago, it was prior to COVID. And, um, it was slated for replacement, everything being put on hold, waiting on the new agreements, the lease agreements with the airport as Maxwell Park is, park is owned by the airport. We leased that park from Barrow County. So we just recently, January finalized the lease agreement. And so this is the first project that I had ready to go to bring forward to you for replacement. The playground is over 20 years old and absolutely has to be replaced.
And thank you. And, um, and that is ADA compliant, uh, surface as well. It's going to be placed there as a rubber surface?
It's not a rubber surface. It's ADA compliant mulch that we use in all of our parks, yeah.
Okay. Still, I, uh, I thank you for that. I, I really don't have any questions. I just thought it was important to point out what you already did, which is that this is a 20-year-old playground that a lot of that community has been asking for, uh, a replacement. And, and, um, and the city has finally come through and, and done that. So thank you for that. I just wanted it to be highlighted.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Good. And, uh, Ms. Sorenson, um, I, I know that the FAA held things up. Uh, during that time period, um, we had the tragic loss of Taylor Bishop. Uh, there was discussion at the, at the commission at the time of the street naming that we were going to do something within this area. Is that still on, uh, is that still under consideration? Uh, as far as, um, uh, as far as a, uh, tribute to Taylor within the, within the playground community?
No.
Commissioner, the, unfortunately, the only direction I was given by this commission that the manager knows of is that, the street naming and the bench that we did. I, I know there was discussion, but we weren't given any additional direction for that.
And the bench was placed in the vicinity of the park. And I believe that's, was approved by the family.
All right, thank you. Uh, city clerk, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Seiple?
Yes.
Mayor Horden?
Yes.
Motion, thank you.
Uh, item 11, city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Commission. And Mr. Vice Mayor, this is a motion to pass proposed ordinance number 2023-01 on first reading. It is an ordinance of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, modifying the Pembroke Pines City Center Mixed Use Development, referenced as MXD District. The design guidelines for the approximate 162-acre parcel of the Pembroke Pines City Center property, generally located west of Palm Avenue between Pines Boulevard and Washington Street, by amending and updating the Pembroke Pines City Center MXD design guidelines to create a medical district permitting an additional 150 units, 80% of which are age restricted, removal of certain uses and amending the existing design guidelines to conform to the revised land development code as referenced in Exhibit A, attached Tier Two and incorporated herein, providing for a codification, providing for conflict, providing for severability and finally providing for an effective date. Item number 11 on the floor for consideration, Mr. Vice Mayor and Commission, for first reading. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Is there a motion?
No.
Moved by Commissioner Castillo. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Seiple. Uh, discussion?
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Um, Commissioner Good.
So can, uh, can staff provide a, a presentation on what this is representing, this item?
And Mr. Mayor, before I go out to the public, um, I'll ask you if you have any comments on the item.
Mike Sam, Assistant City Manager and Director of Planning and Economic Development. Uh, with us tonight is Dennis Mealy. His clients, uh, clients, um, are here to make a presentation on the item. Uh, staff will be here to answer any questions, should there be any.
Mr. Mealy?
Good evening. Thank you, Dennis Mealy, 200 East Farah Golar for Lauderdale, behalf of the applicant. And we have a few pictures. So, uh, you know that the city center, of course, includes, um, all of the properties that you see here, uh, on the west going all the way over to that shopping center west of us. And then we've outlined in blue the portion of the city center that we're amending, uh, which is the old city hall site and the property just to the south of it. The area in yellow, uh, is staying the same. We're not changing, uh, the zoning or the MXD for that. So this is the, uh, original block plan. And you see that block seven is the one that we're changing, which is all the way on the right. And at one point, uh, the northern piece was approved for a gas station, a self-storage and a hotel. Uh, that's where the medical district is going now. And then the southern part of block seven is where the, uh, senior housing is going to go. So, um, again, this is telling you the same thing I just told you from the chart. So then you see now the proposed change to the block plan. Uh, all the blocks west of the power lines remain the same. Uh, block seven becomes the medical district. Block eight is the assisted living and the senior housing. Um, all of this, of course, is in accordance with the purchase and sale agreement that was approved by the city, uh, for these portions of the property and these uses. So, uh, what, what we're showing here is consistent with what we put in the purchase and sale agreement. So that's what we're doing. Uh, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Commissioner Good?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. So, um, if you can go, um, so old city hall in the blue.
Right.
Was that, that was originally block, what you showed as block seven and block eight?
So, um, this- So this is the current plan. And you notice that they're both labeled Block 7. It's got a northern part and a southern part. We just thought because they're two separate blocks, they should have two separate numbers. So we made them separate.
Hold there, if you can go back.
Sure.
So Block 7, which is the community commercial, which is the assisted living facility, the Providence that is being built there.
That's correct.
So on page, so I'm just trying to understand some things. So I'm just asking some questions and I'll comment after I get that clarity. So on page 23 of the, let's say, the red line version.
Okay.
Of the MX, of the guidelines.
Right.
So C, overall development standards, on page 23, Table 12.
Okay.
So there is a reference here of 150 dwelling units, so it's being added, of which 80% are age-restricted.
Right.
And then underneath it, it's cut off, but it looks like the 150-bed special residential assisted living.
Right.
So does that mean that this is an additional 150 dwelling units that's being added?
Mike Sam, Assistant City Manager and Planning and Economic Development Director. So previously, Block 7 had approved over 350 apartment units. So what happened during various subsequent changes is that we, I'm going to use-
If I may interrupt you, apartment or hotel?
Apartment units.
Okay.
Okay. So we did a land use plan amendment back in 2015 for the original builders of City Center on 7th. We added the extra units, and then as we went through the process, I'm going to use the word downgrade because they don't generate as many trips and everything else, but we swapped those units out for assisted living and then these senior units which are going into the plan now. So those, we've already had done the loop-up, which granted the units on the, what we're calling here, the southern portion of Block 7.
So you're saying that there is not an additional 150 units that are being added?
We're not adding any additional units. We're just kind of reclassifying them. We're identifying in them specifically as senior housing, and we had already previously identified those as assisted living.
Because I don't see the strike through on what you're speaking to.
Well, because that was two changes before. So this is our, like, Ninth Amendment to the MXD over the years.
All right, just so you know, I'm just reading this document that you provided us. And typically, you know, like you're doing with the, with the ho, with the storage and the service station, you know, you're adding and then you're deleting. And I don't see, I see an add here, I just don't see a delete. So we can have further conversation later that you can walk me through. I don't want to take the time on that. But you're just saying, though, the most important thing I need to know is that you're saying that that is not an additional 150 units.
These units were already put on the plat, which was approved by the commission, and they had already been approved by land use, the total number of uses, units. And I want to go back to almost 24, 2017, I believe.
Okay. So that means there's going to be a total of 300 units then at the Providence? Because it's 150 assisted living plus 150 dwelling units.
So assisted living units are actually two for one. So realistically speaking, an assisted living unit is half the amount of units. So when you look at land use plan amendment, assisted living units are, or special residential facility units are actually considered like half a unit. So that's 75. And then we have the senior housing units, which is up to 150. As you may recall, when you guys approved the amendment to the purchase and sale agreement, they didn't know their final plan number, but they asked for up to, so between 130 and 150 units. Again, that's less than the originally approved land use plan.
So, okay. But these units here too, so you're adding one space per dwelling unit for parking for the age-restricted residential units, the 150, I'm assuming?
I want to say it was a little bit higher than that when you looked at the aggregate.
It's Table 14.
What page, where are you at?
Page 27, Table 14.
Gentlemen, if you could, I know you're sharing the podium, but if you could use the mic, that would be awesome, so the mayor can hear. Thank you.
And then again, there's more stuff in there that's been cut off. I can't tell what it is.
Yeah, so we have guest parking separated in there. There's, it's one space per unit, and then there's an additional. Give me one second.
I'm going to try to look at the non-red line one to see if it shows it better.
I thought it'd be easier to work off the red line with you guys, so.
I know, but you're right. Some of those things, it seems like the typing got-
They are cut off. So it's like, I'm, okay.
You didn't make it in the print.
Right.
Put this one. You got it?
I see an opportunity to have some of these questions answered ahead of time, but I don't want to put, so Mr. Sam and Mr. Mealy on the spot.
Mike Sam, Planning and Economic Development Director, for the record. It is one space per dwelling unit for age-restricted units and one and a half spaces per dwelling unit for non-age-restricted unit. As it states in the document, a minimum 80% need to be parked, need to be age-restricted. So they can have 20%, which are regular units.
Okay. So I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
And Mr. Vice Mayor, I just want you to know that I have several members of my community that are actually rather interested in this, and so I need to have this conversation with you all and them paying attention to this.
I'm certain that we all have that same interest. It's just a little bit more efficient that they know what you're going to ask.
Well, I have to also share with you information that I review so that when I make my comments, you'll understand them too.
Totally in context.
I can't do that in the absence of your presence. So as I go forward on here, if I'm on page 30, under parking.
You're on the red line still?
Red line still.
Okay.
So the first paragraph reads, "Parking requirements for the medical district are provided in a table. Off-site parking areas that are shown on an improved site plan may count toward the required parking. Any off-site parking spaces that are counted towards meeting the minimum parking requirement shall be subject to an executed shared parking agreement." Now, I actually have a pretty, I have a problem with this particular item. You know, we already know that as we build more dense products, we get more vehicles than we have parking for. And you are identifying off-site parking as counting towards the parking requirement if they get into an agreement. I'm thinking, what's the perpetual answer to that? You can get into an agreement in year one and year two. That off-site location says, I don't want to get into an agreement with you anymore. What happens then? It doesn't speak to that.
So if you're looking at the plan right now, do you see where it says Block 4? Between Block 4 and Block 7 is the parking under the FPNL easement, which is directly adjacent to the medical use. So what the intention is here is that should the developer, again, at this moment in time, they have not proposed anything that would have them go into that parking field, but should they go into that parking field, they could enter into an agreement for shared parking within that parking lot. This is similar language that we use throughout City Center. In fact, the city has a shared parking agreement with this parking lot with the developers. So we've gone through that process. So this parking lot, which is directly adjacent to this use, could be applied for, and they could ask for a shared parking agreement if they, again, depending on what they build. At this moment in time, they haven't done that. We're only at the zoning stage.
So who owns that, who owns that lot?
The Terra Group.
Owns that parking lot?
They own part, they own this parking lot right here, correct.
Okay. And what happens if Terra Group is told by FPNL, I'm sorry, I don't want you there anymore because this is within the FPNL easement? Because I'm certain that's something in the agreement that Terra has in here. Because what if they want to build something there?
So FPNL does what's called consent agreements with adjoining property owners for situations like this. I've done them here, I've done them Pembroke Pines, I've done them Cooper City, and they have standards for where you can go. And you notice that parking lot in the north, you see how some of it is parking, but some of it is green. So when you do this with FPNL, you have to locate every power pole, and your parking has to not interfere with the power poles or interfere with FPNL's access to it. So they don't just terminate these things willy-nilly, you know, you set it up in advance so that you put everything in the right place. But let me say this, if you're going to have a shared parking agreement, it's going to have to have a long-term life. You know, you can't have something to say, well, I'm going to have it for two years, and at the end of two years, you can't use the parking anymore, and now the guy's short on parking. So it would have to be something long-term.
Not unless they hire you.
And let me say this, if there is any shared parking agreement, we would submit it to the city for review to make sure it's right. And if we need to add that language to this paragraph, I'm perfectly fine indicating any shared parking agreement has to be approved by the city.
I, it still doesn't satisfy me with the, with the perpetual requirement. I mean, that's the point behind having parking. You know, you have to look in perpetuity, and basically, that's as long as that facility is in existence. So I call it perpetuity. It could be 30 years, it could be 20, it could be 100. But the point is, though, is that something can happen. Terra can sell the contract or sell whatever it is that they own there. Somebody else can take it over, think that they got a better deal somewhere else because, you know, we continue to have parking issues, you know, in this area. I'm not comfortable, being very honest with you, of this document not referencing something that goes into perpetuity, because that's what the intended parking is for. I mean, that's what we do this whole process for.
We, Mike Sam, Planning and-
On-site containment.
We, it's important to add that as of today, and any given day, those parking facilities, especially the city's parking facilities, aren't used on a daily basis. We do have a shared parking agreement already in place. When this property was developed, we actually had to pay FPNL for the relocation of the poles in a specific fashion, and they were part of that agreement. At this time, today, and again, this is something that we would evaluate once we see the site plans for the future medical district, we can mandate that there's more on-site parking. I mean, again, that's within the purview of staff as you go forward. If they have trouble meeting the parking, they can ask for this agreement. It's not a given, it's a request. As staff in this particular area, we're pretty comfortable with the uses that they're providing that we've seen to date with what's being proposed in terms of on-site. I understand your concern. And again, we can look between first and second reading if there's additional language that we could put in here. We'll work with the city attorney's office to add something. But again, we do have cross-access and shared, shared parking agreements already in place. In fact, those were articulated in previous contracts that we've done with the sale of this land.
And I apologize that I had not seen that, and I would have probably made a reference to that too. So, because now I'm aware of it, just because I wasn't aware of what went on in these agreements that I don't necessarily get to see, I'm just telling you that I'm not comfortable with us doing off-site parking as counting towards the parking requirement for the development. Without having some sort of, something that deals with the perpetuality of the need.
So just a quick question. Because we're in an MXD, site plans come to the city commission for final approval, right?
No, they're part of the master plan.
They're part of the master plan, okay. Well, I'm telling you, we'll stipulate, and we can add it here if you want, that if we're proposing shared parking, it's got to be approved by the city so you can make sure that it meets whatever standards it should meet.
Yeah, but what if, what if we say as part of the agreement, we want to see a 30-year contract? Somebody going to give a 30-year contract?
City attorney, is there anything you want to ask, Mr. Mealy?
Not at this time, Mr. Vice Mayor. I think that it's an item still in play.
Okay.
I would suggest that where we have city, we have shared parking agreements in place, most of those don't usually have a termination unless there's some sort of cause in many of the ones we've dealt with already. But again, we, if 30 years is something that the commission would be looking for, that's something we can definitely approach.
That's okay with us too.
Okay, we'll look for that then.
Mr. Seiple?
I'm not, I'm not saying it.
I'm sorry.
So I just want to make some general comments about this particular location. Could you go, well, maybe there's a better image. Can you go to the next image? Is there another image after that? No?
There's a serial photo.
Yeah, that's really kind of hard to tell. So one of the things that I also have substantial concern about is that nothing here speaks to some of the traffic management. And I'm really concerned about the traffic that comes out at this location. I mean, what's that street called? Third something, what is that, City Center something?
Technically, City Center Boulevard.
City Center Boulevard. And I actually really encourage all my colleagues that, you know, when you, when you come, you know, during this time, when we're coming to the meetings, that you actually enter from that, that location. The principal problem with that is there is an incredible amount of traffic that is generated at that intersection. And the problem is that creates the greatest hazard is that we allow left-outs at this location. And I think it's very important for the safety, if we're, if we're, we're adding a bunch of seniors to this location. You're encouraging more seniors to come to this location. And that intersection becomes a huge hazard when you allow left-outs. And that doesn't mean necessarily for people leaving, but also it means for people coming in. So seniors would have to come in from that location if they were coming, going northbound on Palm Avenue. But if you've ever been there, you will note, and we can certainly ask for the police, the police support. Chief?
Commissioner, can I interject real quick?
Need you to pay attention for just a moment, because I'm going to need to ask the chief-
Commissioner, can I, if I could, if I can interject for one second. We utilize the traffic and that intersection in our approach to trying to get the traffic light at 7th. And Mr. Kennedy can tell you that right now, our plans are with Broward County for the light at 7th. We believe the light at 7th will make some big headway in there.
Has nothing to do with that, because the light is south of there, and I'm telling you-
But the light-
My speaking point is left turn out, which means going north. They won't even go near the light. It has no impact for the light.
When we were working with Broward County, one of the things that was stated is that the light will provide a pause in the traffic, which currently runs unabated, as we've discussed previously, from Pembroke Road straight through to Pines Boulevard. So that light at 7th will allow more movements to occur in a safer fashion when there's brakes, you know, when the light turns red, then we have, we have, we have a brake to allow different types of traffic to leave.
And Mr. Stan, not to, and I don't want to take any, I'm not taking the floor from Commissioner Good, the issue is making the left. The light on 7th is certainly going to slow things down, but it's the southbound traffic that's the, that's the greater concern. Am I correct, Commissioner Good?
It spoke north himself, but you're correct too. It's the southbound traffic that is nonstop as well.
The bigger issue than northbound.
Sounds like our Costco problem.
Well, this is no different than some of the issues that, you know, for my colleagues that are out west. I mean, you know, you have like the school traffic hours, and it's not necess, right, and it's not necessarily just the peak traffic or the amount of traffic, it's the fact that people start doing crazy things to maneuver to get in or out of where they want to go. And that's exactly what happens here. When you make that left turn, I'm telling you, it is an extreme hazard. And again, I'd like to ask if we could have the police chief just come up and give a brief, a brief report on that intersection.
Chief Chimpino.
Chief, thank you for coming up to the podium. I just want to ask for your assessment of that particular intersection, which is coming out of City Center Boulevard, is, you know, what is the level of hazard for traffic at that intersection for left-bound, left-turn traffic?
Right now, the level's high.
Mm-hmm.
Say that again, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
The level of safety for left-bound turns coming out of City Hall at Palm to go north is dangerous right now.
Thank you, thank you, chief. That's all I need. Thank you, Mr., thank you, Chief. That's all I need. So, again, I don't know if, uh, but I would like to see something in here that makes reference or addressing that, uh, left turn out at that location.
Um, Mr. Mealy. Dennis Mealy, on behalf of the applicant. Um, we don't really have anything to say about what you may do in the median and the right-of-way. You know, that's between you and the county or whoever else. Um, that's, we don't get to decide that. Um, what we have done so far
The City Center Boulevard, sir, is city road. It is not a county road.
That's what I mean. That's what I'm saying. You get to decide that. We, we don't.
And the city, correct.
So, I can't stand up here and say, I want to make sure I can turn left out, because that's not my decision. That's your decision. Um, I just, I do want to point out what we're doing, uh, for traffic. In addition to the purchase price for the property, when the contract was approved, uh, contribute four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Palm Avenue traffic improvements slash traffic lights, contribute four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Pines Boulevard traffic improvements slash traffic lights, reimburse the city a hundred and twenty-two thousand, a hundred and forty-eight for traffic credits, uh, reimburse for the demolition of City Hall, I know that's something different, and then another thirty thousand for pavement markings. So, we're putting in money that you can use for traffic improvements, and the decision of whether left turns are allowed outbound on that road or not is not our decision, it's yours. And maybe, maybe in conjunction with the county, because you have a traffic engineering agreement with them, but it's not our decision. So, it's up to you. But I do want to point out that we are putting in money that could help you with these types of things.
And, and, and thank you, uh, Mr. Mealy. I, I do want you to know, though, too, I, I do recognize that. I, I do want you to know, too, that in good conscience, I cannot vote for increase in a, an existing problem. And so increasing the traffic generation there is a little bit of a concern for me.
Well, and I know what you're
Particularly when we take a look at the reality of what that traffic is.
I understand. Um, and when we look at these traffic issues, uh, we could say, well, let's compare it to vacant land, because that's what it is right now. But that's not how it works. We compare what you're currently allowed to do to what we're proposing to do. And I think, as Mr. Stan said earlier, initially, this parcel, I think it was three hundred and fifty, uh, regular residential units instead of a maximum of three hundred ALF slash adult age restricted. So it's less traffic than what was previously approved. And there's no gas station, and then, you know, and the, uh, and the hundred and twenty thousand square feet of, uh, office for the northern piece is what we're going to be living under. It'll be medical uses, but within that hundred and twenty thousand square feet. So we're not really, we're not increasing it beyond what is currently approved. Um, and we are putting in the money. And then just finally, if you decide that it's not safe to have left turns outbound, you, you can make that change. You don't have to ask us.
Well, I, I, again, Block Seven is, is where I believe that the intent for a gas station and the storage facility was going to be. Is that correct?
Yes.
And that's why you're removing it, so that you can put this facility, or these facilities, medical facilities, or the MXD into this location.
That is correct.
So, for me, I can, I can tell you that I, I, I'm comfortable knowing that that's going to, what you're going to do, the change is going to increase the, uh, volume of traffic that will require entry and exit at that location.
The developer has submitted preliminary approvals to try to get another opening on Pines Boulevard also. It's not here yet, because it's still going through the approvals.
Another opening on Pines Boulevard?
A ingress and egress point for the medical use on Pines Boulevard. It's
At that location at Block Seven? That close to the, to the traffic light?
It's actually further back.
If you, if you look at that drawing that's up on the screen
There's a white line there.
There's a white line at the top of the FPNL easement. It's kind of like a little curvy line. That's where it would be. Can you see that? There you go, right there.
Yeah, and I already know that that traffic gets backed up all the way to the light that's the entrance off of Pines Boulevard existing to the, uh, one of the main entrances here at the light, right across from the, so I mean, that, that traffic is already backed up, so you're going to try to put traffic out onto a back, and then you're going to have them cross over a right-turn lane?
Uh, I know that we've already been to the DOT for this. Um, it, uh, will be part of the site plan that we're proposing for the medical, and the DOT said it worked fine. Um, and it's just for right turns. And, and again
I, I just, uh, again, I, I, I'm only, I'm only looking. My, my, probably my biggest grief right now is that left turn out, I, I find it to be a huge safety factor. And
Commissioner Good.
We can evaluate it. Again, one of the challenges that we do have with this intersection, like we have in many places, is the property owner on the west, east side of the road also has certain rights that are built in his plat and his opening. Staff can look into this particular issue. I, my, my personal thing is, I don't think this is necessarily a zoning issue. Um, this is a city-owned road. It's a little bit different than other situations for our side of the street. Uh, but again, it's something that we can look into. I, I don't know.
But all of the looking into goes away. I mean, I'm, I'm just going to say, the, the looking into is not a commitment of anything. So, that's not an answer that I'm willing to accept.
Uh, Commissioner, does there anything further?
Well, I'm just going to ask my colleagues to recognize that I, I'm, I'm not going to be able to support this item. Um, I do have, uh, concerns about if we do approve it, that we're going to just increase the intensity of the problem that currently exists. And I ask that you recognize, within your own areas, what that means sometimes. And there is a solution, and I'm certain the solution is here. I just don't see it right now.
What I'd like to do is, is, is recognize Commissioner Siple, then I'll go to Commissioner Castillo. Um, I'll weigh in, and I'll have, let the mayor have, have the last word if he so chooses. Commissioner Siple.
Thank, thank you, Vice Mayor. Hi. Um, so Palm Avenue is a city road. We control what happens on, on the city road meeting after, I mean, we still have to do all that stuff. But I, I, you know, I mentioned Costco, which we had an issue, again, with Costco. Kind of similar to, kind of similar to this, where in fact, as Mr. Stan said, even though it's a city road, there are some property rights by some of the owners that may, their agreement may say ingress, egress, and I, I don't know what, I don't know if that's it, but we ran into that problem. But we, I think we found a solution to our Costco, which is the old peanut in the middle of the intersection there, which will stop the left turn, and everybody else can still move as they need to move. That may be something that we should look at right here on our own road that we have control over, which eliminates, if you put up a sign that says no left turn, people are not always going to pay attention to that. But if it's physically incapable, they're not capable of making that left turn, because this is in the intersection area there, they can't do that. So, um, so my, my colleague, maybe that's something that we, that we talk about as far as that part of it. Um, I just want to be clear on this. We are looking at what is existing there, um, the, the, um, Providence with a hundred and fifty units. What you're looking for, your client, Mr. Mealy, is a hundred and fifty units. That's all that we're looking at for what you have combined as Block Seven.
So, let, let me, so this is the current one. We're in the northern part of Seven. This is gas station, self-storage hotel, and the southern part is the ALF. And then what we're proposing to do is, instead of the hotel, the self-storage and the gas station have the medical uses, and then on the southern piece, to have the age-restricted housing as well as the ALF.
Correct. And so we are keeping Block Seven separate from Block Eight, because what you're asking for in, in, in this item is talking specifically about Block Seven, giving Block Seven the rights for the things that you were talking about, the general office, medical office, all of that. Has nothing to do with Block Eight being part of the medical district, correct?
Right. Block Eight is totally residential, either ALF or adult housing. Block Seven is the medical.
Okay, so, so that, so what you're proposing then is that we are keeping Seven and Eight separate, and therefore, the item before us only relates to Block Seven, which is not part of Block Eight?
No, no, the, the MXD amendment relates to Block Seven and Block Eight. Remember the
Well, that's my, yes, and that's my, my question. Why, why was that, um, why was that changed? Because the things that are being asked for in, and for Block Seven, this, this medical district, and we went through all this, like with Memorial and, and all that stuff, but this is talking specifically about, um, uh, more than what the, the ALF was, was presented and, and intended to be, in, in my opinion.
So, so the, the ALF was never intended to occupy all of what is now Block Eight. It was only a portion. That's why you still had the balance of Block Eight and Block Seven to sell.
Right, right.
So when we came in with the purchase and sale agreement, which was approved in, what, 2021, uh, it included the medical use on the north, the ALF that was already approved on the south, plus the one hundred and thirty to one hundred and fifty unit senior housing.
I, I, I guess, I understand all that. I remember all our discussions about all that. No, I'm good with that. It's just when you're combining Seven and Eight, and what we are voting on or, or, you know, looking at this evening, makes them both kind of the same by the, by virtue of the rights that they, that they are being, would be awarded here, specifically, um, the, you know, standalone emergency rooms and all that. I, I can see where
Commissioner, let me clarify real quick. I think this might help.
Okay, okay.
When the commission approved the purchase and sale agreement, the purchase and sale agreement specifically stated that what we're calling Block Seven would allow up to a hundred and twenty thousand square feet of medical use. Okay? And the same
Block Seven, when it was only the northern, the north part.
Just as you're seeing it right here. The purchase and sale agreement also stated that Block Eight would allow, on the western portion of Block Eight, up to a hundred and fifty with eighty percent senior housing units. So the commission approved that amendment to the contract with the Terra Group. Okay? This step is now creating the development regulations for those two uses. When the commission created the MXD, if you remember, we can go back to the, the library back in the day, the commission sat in the room and they said, okay, with this block, Block Three is going to have an office, it's going to have commercial, these are the uses that can be here. This is just following in that same trend, and it's aligning directly with what was put into the purchase and sale agreement. So what we've done is we've created the medical district, and within the medical district, we've identified certain uses, certain parking requirements that follow along for that property. On Block Eight, we've created the regulations for a senior housing complex.
Right.
As well as for Providence Living. Providence Living did the same rezoning the last time. So when the developers have come in, after they've done their purchase and sale agreement, ninety percent of the time, they come in and they have to amend the block to put their use in, and then create the development regulations that follow along with it.
Okay, so Block, okay, answer this question, then. Block Eight, which is with, with Providence there now, on the, on the, more the west, the west part of it, what, what is remaining for Block Eight as far as, uh, what would be, like, de, permitted development? What is, what's remaining there?
So, so the commission to date, and this, I believe Providence one came here, the commission approved a hundred and thirty-five-bed assisted living facility. Not even the hundred and fifty, it's a hundred and thirty-five bed.
Which is going up, which is
That's what's under construction today. On the western portion of that parcel, which is about three acres, the contract and the plat call for up to one hundred and fifty age-restricted, uh, with eighty percent being age-restricted units. So, again, that plat note just modified the previously approved apartment building that was on this block.
So Block Eight, as we're looking at it, could potentially have three hundred units on it?
No.
That's what you just said.
Well, no, because you guys already modified the plat and reduced those units to what you're seeing today. A hundred and fifty age-restricted, up to a hundred and fifty age-restricted, and up to a hundred and fifty ALF units. But as I explained before, ALF units are fifty percent.
Under, under your land use plan and the county land use plan, an ALF, two unit, two rooms count as one unit. So if it's a hundred and thirty-five rooms, then that's what, sixty-seven and a half units on the land use plan for you and the county. And the reason they do that is because ALFs have less impacts for, you know, traffic and water and sewer and those kind of things. That's why they count them as half. Um, and then, let me just say that in terms of these steps we're taking, the purchase and sale agreement envisioned all of this, that we had to come back, we had to amend the MXD, we had to amend the plat note. And so we're simply doing what the purchase and sale agreement that was unanimously approved by the city commission called for us to do.
Okay, I'm going to ask it one more time. Mr. Mealy?
Yes.
Block Eight, as we're looking at it right now, which is the southern portion of that, not tied into Block Seven?
Right.
Currently has a hundred and thirty-five up to a hundred and fifty. Providence is going, going out of ground now.
Correct.
Answer, answer me again, because I didn't get the answer. What is still remaining and available to be built on Block Eight by itself?
Okay, so Block Eight has the ALF, as you said. The only additional thing on Block Eight is between one hundred and thirty and one hundred and fifty, age-restricted, eighty percent age-restricted senior housing. That's it. Nothing else.
So Block Eight could have a hundred and fifty and, and a hundred and fifty on Block Eight.
Well, I guess it's a hundred and thirty-five now for the Providence and for ours.
But Block Eight could have that.
That's correct.
Block Eight could have that. And then Block Seven can have what you're asking for here, and it did, you're looking for office and med, and, and, uh, emergency room and support services and all, and, and all of that. But living there also, you're asking for what in Block Seven?
So Block Seven is only the medical uses. There's a list in here capped at a hundred and twenty thousand square feet total, because that's what the plat note calls for.
And Block Seven, as the, as this, uh, MXD, is no, is no residential?
There's no residential in Block Seven.
Office and, and medical, everything.
Only medical. And that's, and that's why we split Block Seven into Seven and Eight, because now Seven is medical, Eight is residential. And it made sense to separate them.
I get, I get that. So now my question is, if we are including in this item tonight, does this item tonight only refer to this proposed Block Seven and not anything at all with Block Eight?
No. The item tonight includes Seven and Eight. Let me go back, let me go back.
Mm-hmm.
See, see the area in blue? That's what we're amending. The northern portion of the area in blue where it says old is Block Seven, and the part that says City Hall is Block Eight.
So, okay, so I, no, I get it. That's why I'm asking, I, I do. But according, okay, go back to the other, the, there.
This one?
Yeah, uh, yeah. But in Block Seven, all that you are telling us, standing here tonight, is that you are looking for the things that are listed here in this item for Block Seven.
Right. The medical campus uses.
Correct. And not
Not residential.
Not a residential.
No.
The residential's all going to be in Block Eight and dealt with in Block Eight.
That's correct.
But they will all be that, that whole MXD, um, district. Seven and Eight com, combined will be the MXD district.
So the MXD today, if you look, is everything in yellow and blue.
Right.
The only part of the MXD we're amending is the part in blue. The part in yellow stays the same.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Castillo.
Yes, thank you. So, uh, we've been dealing with City Center now, at least I have, since , uh, two thousand and four.
Since we were at the library, seeing this drawing block, I think, right?
I, I was at the library, too.
Drawing block, we had colored
The charrettes and all that other kind of stuff. Not to be confused with the charrels. And we had, we, we've had, uh, a lot of discussions, and there have been a lot of amendments over, over the time. And the comparison to the Costco Center is appropriate, because here, yet again, we have a triangle. And that's just the way it is, because FPNL has their easement, has their power line going in a diagonal direction. And that's all there is to it. And it's part of what, of, of what the challenges are with, uh, in, in the development of this particular area. We have known about this for years, and we've proceeded. There are many shared parking agreements in City Center. It was built with that concept in mind. Uh, I don't know that we can undo that now, at this late date. Uh, the infrastructure is down, and I don't know that we need to undo that in terms of the parking. If the parking, eh, the parking is what the parking is, there's a code for parking, and it's, and it's up to the applicant to show us how they're going to, how they're going to meet it. Um, we need to be consistent in how we treat these, these, these applicants. We have approved these agreements in the past. And there's really no basis, I think, short of, of, you know, drifting into areas where, uh, uh, city commission uh, uh, city commission shouldn't be for, for, for denying it if they can meet the code. So the parking is the first thing. Either they have enough spaces or they don't under the code and it's up to the applicant to show us how. The left turn issue is a significant one. And it is one that Commissioner Seifel and I out west share with the Costco Center, it's in our district, but we, you know, we all shop there and I think people east of the city shop there as well. The, the angle of West Fork, uh, is sort of similar to this. This area, um, is city owned, that stretch of Palm Avenue. If we choose to say no left turn, there'll be no left turn. If we put a roundabout in there, we probably would improve the functionality of, of, of that area, but I'm not an engineer, but I think that should be looked at. Roundabouts are what you use when you have difficulty making left turns. Uh, but this, but this, this plan also allows the occupants here to use the Publix, which is right on the center, west of the location, without having, having to go north or south on Palm Avenue. And it also has, uh, an exit with a signal, um, on a roundabout on 103rd. So no one's forced to make a left turn there. No one's forced to make a right turn there. Indeed, the city could decide just to close that entry. So, so I think that, I think that the conversation makes a lot of sense. I think that we should look at what the impacts of the different options are. But before us today are, uh, guidelines. We're, 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 we're looking at design guidelines and some of these questions have to, have, have more to do with site planning. And I think that, I think that, uh, I think that they're well stated. I'm glad that it's out in the open early. I think there's plenty of time to work on these issues and resolve them. I think we need to move the item forward, because this is, this is a property that we used to own, that we sold for a purpose. And it has to be put to use and has to be put back on the tax rolls. So I think that the points are well taken. I think that every commissioner has been very eloquent in, 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 in how they are expressing it, but I actually have a little bit more optimism, because we own this Palm Avenue. And I think that there's lots of things that we can do to make Palm Avenue safer. And one of the.
May I make a point of clarification? I do believe Palm Avenue is owned by the county.
It's county, yeah. We, we, we have the property that, that, that's adjacent to Palm Avenue, so we can, we can have up to, uh, Palm Avenue without getting the county involved.
Thank you very much. Point well taken. Reclaiming my, uh, my time. So, so I, I think, I think that even, that even under that circumstance, and I appreciate the correction, even under that circumstance, there are plenty of options. So I, I don't see the need to, I see the need to telegraph as we just have, that we have concerns, but I don't see the need to vote against the item. I just, I personally do not see that need. Thank you.
All right. Um, I'll weigh in and I'll go to the mayor. The, the charrettes back in 2004 led to a voter referendum and the voters said that they want a city center and they want it built and they want to have, um, something unlike anything else anywhere within our borders. Initially, uh, there was a ginormous amount of rental, um, in this zone, Commissioner Good, like 350 or more units. At, at some point, there was, um, there was talks of, of our police station going in, uh, which is now Block Eight. And I was opposed to that for the reasons stated regarding the amount of traffic coming in and out. What, what, what was being proposed tonight is just a shift in, uh, where people will be housed. Um, they're not going to be living in the medical office section of Block Seven, they're going to be shifted down to Block Eight. Certainly, the entire blue section, uh, when we entered into, uh, the agreement with Terra Group, has manifested intent of this commission, where they acquired land rights and uses and, and we've all taken those votes and we've all had the opportunity to weigh in and, uh, even, uh, even our beloved, um, Commissioner Carl Schechter, uh, who oversaw this, uh, for a very long time, uh, provided wise wisdom of, yeah, we have a lot of cars and we need, we need to get that fixed. Now, Mr. Mealy, um, years ago, uh, when the, uh, when the apartments south of Block Eight were built, committed to a traffic light on Palm Avenue. There was, uh, there was a lot of money put into that and I, and I thank him for that and his client for doing that. And at the time that that was proposed, it was a two-faced, uh, build and along Pines Boulevard, we were looking at like a Hollywood Studios type of television studio. I mean, this, this thing has changed over a period of literally two decades. The, um, this little piece, uh, this, this blister relief valve along, um, Pines Boulevard is, um, it can certainly be worked out with, with traffic engineering. I, I traverse through this intersection, um, not as often as Commissioner Good, but I'd say that I'm pretty, probably a pretty close second, because that's how I get here. Um, that's how I traverse here. I see from above every day what's happening here. The medical office district, once you get past five o'clock, there's no traffic. Um, so Block Eight becomes a residential. The reason why they're saying half is because most people in ALFs don't drive.
No.
Um, so what we have here is a voter initiative. Now, it's on the record, the only rental I've ever supported was 172nd and Sheridan Street. I've been here 11 years. It's the only rental I've supported and density and traffic and that sort of thing, Commissioner Good. And I applaud you for, for fighting like hell, because I agree with you. We, this, this carve-out certainly has to be fixed. Um, and we can, we can control that process. Um, we certainly can control the process. Uh, this, Commissioner Seifel, this was, um, uh, this was going to be a, a bus hub, remember? Could you imagine the traffic we would have if it was a bus hub coming through there? So we had the bus hub, we had, we had, we had the, uh, we had the television studios, we had the, um, we had the PD. Now what do we have? We have what's being proposed, something that, that is in dire need for the city, which is ALF, medical-driven uses, so that our residents don't have to utilize Memorial, Regional and those that are east. We have developed as a city, now granted, we have a lot of traffic in this city and, and by all means, we need, we need to make smart decisions, but the voters told us to do this. And what we need to make is something certainly that's going to be even longer than 30 years, because this is a, the, the city center is a legacy gift to future residents and visitors. Now personally, I'm disappointed that we can't get the hotel industry to put a hotel right on this corner with a water feature and an underground and a, and a covered parking garage. But since COVID, the industry has gone, has gone sideways. Colleagues, Airbnb has, um, certainly impacted our city and I've already, Chief, I spoke to our co-director tonight, uh, before the meeting. There is a trend happening in the city. I know I'm getting a little off topic, but be on the lookout, okay? People are actually renting their sheds in the backyard. Okay? They're, they're, they're buying pop-up campers and they're sticking them in the driveways. Okay, it's going to happen in HOA's as well, okay? Be on the lookout for it. But I'm going to support the item tonight. Um, uh, and it's not, it's not for, 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 the voters, the voters want us to do this. We need to move forward. Now, between first reading and second reading, I would anticipate that Commissioner Good and engineering come back with a, give us something, okay? Give us, uh, uh, to, to fix this intersection and maybe this intersection no longer exists as a part of the final plan. But with that, those are, those are my closing comments. Mayor, do you want to weigh in on anything?
Vice Mayor, I'm Boozie Agum.
Okay, so now, uh, members of the public, any comments? Seeing none, uh, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
I'm sorry, I cannot support this, no.
Mayor Organ?
Yes. Mr. Vice Mayor, for the record and commissioners, this item will be heard in, in second and final reading on March the 15th, the Ides of March, on the, in this very same chamber with regard to the item, yes.
Thank you, City Attorney. Item 12, City Attorney.
For the record, uh, item 12 is the following item. It's discussion and possible motion to review the attendance sheet of the Diversity and Heritage Advisory Board and to determine action on excessive unexcused absences which causes lack of quorum and the inability of advisory boards to move on motions or make recommendations. The backup is in the agenda book as well as online referencing that board. Item number 12 on the floor, Mr. Vice Mayor and Commissioner, thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney. I see that the city clerk sponsored this item. Uh, City Clerk, can you provide us a little bit of background?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The information provided on the agenda is basically, uh, straightforward, referring to the issue of quorum that the meetings are challenged by because of unexcused absences. And I would just like to mention too, that we currently have eight vacancies on that board, so combining the vacancies with unexcused absences, the board has a challenge leading for.
Vice Mayor?
Vice Mayor, could I?
Uh, Commissioner Castillo, then Commissioner Seifel.
Do you want to go first?
Okay, yeah, I will.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I, I, I read this with, um, with a lot of interest, uh, obviously. I mean, this is a, this is a pretty, in my opinion, a pretty important, um, committee that we, a board that we have and should be able to carry on with the business that they raised their right hands and swore and said they were going to, going to do based upon what this board is supposed to be able to do. Um, I know that City Clerk just said that there were five, six, eight, what did she say, five, six?
Eight.
Eight vacancies. Um, fortunately, those vacancies are, are alternate, uh, seem to be alternate, uh, members. Uh, the majority of them are alternate members, which means that we have regular members still there, but the problem is they're not showing up at meetings enough for them to have a quorum to even actually, um, take action, to move forward. And I, I think that already, uh, pretty evident that there have been a number of things that have happened in our city that the Heritage and Diversity Board could have proposed an event for or been part of an event, uh, that already existed and, and because they can't take action, nothing really happens with them. The only thing that I would ask certainly is that, that it's important to folks, if they say they want to be on a board, that they show up and they participate and do whatever. But I would really like to see this same report, uh, from the city clerk on all the boards, because I think if we're talking about boards, let's talk about all the boards. If it's a problem, then let's deal with, with all of them and, and find a way to make our boards, um, be able to take the actions that they need and, and, um, it, it's kind of frustrating when you have someone who attends every meeting, changes their, perhaps they're, they all meet in the evenings, changes their schedule around so that they are free to come to a meeting and they go, and then they can't really do anything, because there's not enough folks there to take any action. So my, my request, Vice Mayor, would be that, well, this is very helpful and I'm glad it was brought up, that we actually take act, take, ask for action to be taken to give us a report on all of the boards. Thank you.
Commissioner Castillo.
Yes, I agree. And I also, uh, would like to say, uh, a couple of additional things. So I want to thank the clerk for bringing the item forward. This has been an issue that we have heard, either individually or collectively, it's been mentioned before, but it's the first time that we're having a discussion about it. Not just this board, but, um, as was previously indicated, the attendance at, at all the boards. These are volunteers. We ask them to consider questions, uh, in depth that, uh, that we deem are appropriate for citizens to give us their advice on. And people who are volunteers have, have difficulty sometimes making meetings. That's just the way it is. That's, that's in the nature of, of volunteerism. Some have less difficulty than others. Uh, one comes to mind who has a physical challenge. And, uh, I know that, uh, he in particular goes through, um, a great deal of pain, physical pain, in order to make the meetings that he can. Sometimes he just can't make it, yet when he's there, his contributions are fantastic. Now, Mr. City Manager and Mr., uh, Attorney, I think that there has to be a way, uh, for us to figure out how to expand the use of technology, either by phone or, uh, WebEx, so that people can participate. And maybe that has to be worked into the, the, uh, the equation. As you know, I'm vice chair of the, of the Broward County Planning Council. We recently passed an item, Sam, that, that Mr. Goran, that, uh, allowed for greater participation, if necessary, um, by, uh, technological means. Maybe you want to look into, uh, what, what, what that was. But we should help people to, um, you know, to be able to participate, even if they can't physically make it to, uh, to the meeting. And, um, secondly, I think that, uh, that in a very polite, uh, but, uh, direct way, uh, we can phone call people and say, we've missed you at these meetings. Your presence, uh, um, is valued and your absences have been noted. And we're asking you if, uh, if your absences are because you want us to work with you on an, on a, on an issue or that you're losing interest. That's a fair question to ask people. Sometimes they lose interest and, but they don't have the will to say, I want to get off. Those are questions that I think the clerk can ask or that any of us as appointing officials can ask our own members if we're told about a situation in advance. I by no means blame the clerk, the, the clerk for this. She's doing the best she can with a very, very difficult situation, but I wasn't aware of the, of, of the absence, uh, I hadn't, I hadn't seen the absence sheet, um, before this meeting. And while I respect the recommendation that's been made with respect to changing the nature of boards into quasi judicial and this and that, I don't feel that I'm ready to do that quite yet. Um, I think that this is something that we, we need to tackle. And one of the first things I'm going to tackle is, uh, I note that I have two vacancies for alternate member on, on this, uh, on this board. I'm not, I'm not the only one who's, uh, who's in that situation, but, uh, um, I have to say that, uh, that two escaped my notice. And so I'm on it. I want you to know, Madam Clerk, I am on it. I will get, uh, two, uh, people hopefully by, uh, by our next meeting and, and we will, uh, we will, uh, get there. But I know that this is an issue for you and for your staff and for Sam and his staff who, and for Charlie and his staff who go to these meetings. And it's, uh, uh, it's been a problem for a while and I, and I promise you, Madam Clerk, that I'm going to redouble my effort to, uh, do my part to, uh, to, to deal with it, but I'm not ready to, uh, to take the vote that you're recommending at this time. But I respect that you brought it forward and I thank you for it.
Commissioner Seifel.
Uh, yeah, I have a question, um, for the City Attorney. Mr. Attorney?
Yes, ma'am.
The ordinance that's referenced here is 32.006B1. Does that ordinance require that you must, uh, a member must be seated at the meeting as opposed to, uh, being able to be, uh, on, on the phone or on, on computer, zooming in?
Thank you for responding to the Vice Mayor, to the Commissioner. You're. You're dealing with the issue of quorum, and as you know, during COVID-19, there was a governor's order which expressly allowed local governments, including counties and cities and special districts, to essentially conduct their meetings in a virtual way without the necessity of a physical quorum. And then as COVID began to morph into something other than what it was then, to something what it is now, the governor, as you know, released and terminated that particular order, thereby requiring public entities like this commission to physically require a quorum to conduct public business. In certain instances, school districts and special districts, like regional planning councils, for example, of three or more counties, are able to do something a little different, using what's called communication media technology, which I know Commissioner Castillo was referring to earlier, the CMT, which is probably what they use at the Broward County Planning Council. But the, and I'll look at that for the benefit of this discussion this evening, but at the end of the evening, please know that there's nothing in state law that exempts a public entity, whether it be a city commission or a county commission, from having a physical quorum present to do the public's business, which means that anybody theoretically, and the mayor's an example of that this evening. He's physically not here, but he's physically able to vote, legally able to vote, because there's a physical quorum in the room. Absent a state law, which would authorize something different than what is currently in the statute governing sunshine law and quorum, the challenge is really to having the physical quorum present. So if there is a member, for example, that can't get to the meeting, or needs to dial in, it's not inappropriate or illegal to do so, but the physical quorum issue still maintains itself without change. One thing, if I can, about over the past five years, regional planning councils fought for the issue, because in some instances where there are, regional planning councils of three or more counties, people sit to great distance. And they now require, particularly for South Florida, and we helped to write the state law, and it's in chapter one twenty, not in two eighty-six, which says that at least one-third of the membership must be physically present to create a quorum. The rest can be on CMT. But that's in the law. We don't have that for local government, we don't have that for cities or counties. So the answer to your question, I know it's been a bit circular, and the answer is, physical quorum is still required. If a member is able to attend by phone, they're able to attend, and their attendance is legally qualified as attendance.
Okay, my second question, if I could, Vice Mayor, to the, does this ordinance, this ordinance thirty-two oh six, from what I'm reading here, this item number six, is kind of cut off on the, does this only, does it apply to the, was it part of the forming of the Heritage and Diversity Committee that this section, that was required, you know, was requiring them to have physical presence?
The answer is, when you're looking at item number six within the general report form?
No, I'm sorry. It's something that one of our residents, Mr. Ram Tawari, gave us, and where he cites that section thirty-two oh six, but it's like that, was it written into the ordinance for this particular board that they had to have the same requirements? Because I thought someone told me that they did, it was not part of theirs.
We're going to pull it up and take a look, see, real quick.
Okay, and then my next question to the attorney is, when I was reading through this exhibit that City Clerk gave us, you can have presence, excused, unexcused, or no meeting. I, no one has ever explained to me what is the definition between an excused and an unexcused. Do you just?
I can weigh in on that.
Excuse, do you just barely, you just call in and say, "I can't make it," and?
The member of an advisory committee can just notify the clerk ahead of the meeting, as long as there's been communication with the clerk via email of the absence, it's pretty much an automatic excuse. I do see an opportunity now of, how many of those are you going to allow?
Well, and that's the reason I brought that up, Vice Mayor, is because when I first was looking through the numbers, I was only looking at the unexcused, and I was like, "Well, wait a minute." As I go through and I look through here, there's a lot of excused, and I thought my recollection was all you had to do was simply make a phone call and you got an excuse, which doesn't really work for me.
It's a two-part process, so the member would send in the email, but it's up to the board to actually issue the excuse. And that's always been board-driven. Certainly, that's, I think that's an area of opportunity that we may want to visit as a collective group. Commissioner Good?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. So, for the attorney, I have a question. On the summary explanation and background, number three says alternates may only be seated at a meeting for voting or quorum purposes in the absence of a regular member from the same commission district or of the mayor. So could you tell us what that means?
It facilitates the public's business, which means that if a regular member is not present, an alternate member can serve and be counted, both for a quorum purpose and for voting purposes. So that's clearly the intention of the commission when it adopted the ordinance, to provide a seamless transition of discussions, so that you wouldn't lose the right to vote or the right to make decisions.
Okay. And so, in number four, is it correct that quorum only requires eight voting members?
I don't have that ordinance directly in front of me or in the backup, and Jacob is looking for it at the moment, but that's what it says, it says eight.
All right, so if the regular voting member's not there, the alternate's there, they get to take the place?
They do.
They become counted towards quorum.
Correct.
So there's eight voting members. Okay. So, when we take a look at the attendance, I just want to say, you know, I agree with everybody. Revealing information, and we probably certainly should be getting this on a more regular basis, so that way, you know, we can assist in ensuring that our appointees know that they are important.
That friendly phone call.
Right. But I will tell you, I don't see any meetings except for one where it didn't meet quorum. Every one of these meetings had at least eight, except for June twenty-two, which only had seven. So, is business not being conducted, or is it being conducted? I mean, I'll give you the numbers. A P means they're there, right?
P is present, correct.
So I'm not, I really have to...
Commissioner, is that a question for Mr. Harwood? Is that a question for the clerk? Is that a question?
Well, it made several times reference that the reason why we're dealing with this is because we're having difficulty meeting quorum, and there's only one meeting, which is June of twenty twenty-two, that did not make quorum based on the attendance record. So I'm just, you know, that's a statement that was made publicly, and I'd like to understand what that statement means.
Do we, Commissioner?
Yes, it was also, I think in November of twenty twenty-two, that we had issues with quorum, and whenever there's no quorum, the meeting proceeds as a workshop.
So in November twenty-two, I count eight?
Same as we do, choose the liaison for the board, for the record. Perhaps a liaison, if he's in the room, clarify the question to the Commissioner.
Mr. Chair, I believe, when I'm also looking at it, and I thought I heard them say that the alternate can only vote if they're replacing the member from that district. So I'm just now looking at, is that not true? It is, and so when I'm looking at the November meeting, you had a District Four member, regular member, that was unexcused, but there was no District Four alternate to replace him. So even though there were two other alternates present for a meeting, they couldn't vote on anything, and I think that was the issue they were having, that the recommendations that they were making. I didn't go through all of these that way, but that might be one of the issues. It's not just the number of people there, it's how that board was designed, so maybe you need to change the ordinance, so it doesn't reflect that way.
Commissioner Castillo?
I'd like to make a motion to allow alternate members of the Diversity Board from any district, if they're available, to replace missing members.
Second.
Can I make an amendment?
Hold on, hold on. Commissioner Castillo's sentence was cut off, let him make his motion, and I can get a second. I heard jumps. Commissioner Castillo, can you please restate your motion?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to amend the ordinance for this board, to allow any present alternate member from wherever they may be appointed, district or mayor, to sit instead of a regular member.
Could I ask for a friendly amendment to that?
Yeah, okay. So we have a motion, we have a second by Commissioner Good. Commissioner Saipal, you're recognized.
I would, I would ask my colleague if he would consider including in the language that we set up a rotation for the, an alternate member, instead of it, you're taking it away that it's not from that district, is the only one that can do it. You're saying that it could be anyone, so in order to not have conflict on who's what, that we set up sort of a rotation by district that would be there?
You could do it by rotation, they could flip a coin, they can...
I would ask for a rotation.
Rotation's fine.
Okay, you would add that as a friendly?
Sure, why not? It's as good a way to do it as any, and that alone will help. And I would ask the clerk, when this passes, I would ask the clerk to come back to us and tell us which other boards might benefit from that amendment.
Commissioner Saipal, is my understanding of your friendly amendment that appears to be accepted, that you're looking for a rotation, so that if an alternate member had attended one meeting, that they could not be counted towards a quorum for the following meeting, if another alternate was available who had not been seated?
Unless they need it.
Correct, if they're needed, we would have, if we started out, and the first time, it would be District One, and if there's a District One there, they would do it, if not, you would go to the next District.
Okay, I'll accept that as discussed, as a friendly amendment. City Attorney, we do have a discussion and what appears to be a possible action. Should the commission take action tonight, would this be a first, a second reading, or is it just a one-time?
Mr. Vice Mayor, if I can respond, it would be an ordinance which we would draft as soon as practicable, bring it to the commission for first reading, would require a second reading and a public hearing, and then would be implementable thereafter.
I would only ask if the clerk can recommend, for that first reading, to save time, any additional other boards that this might apply to, that could benefit from it, and this way we have it all in front of us, and we can just do it at one time.
Is it the intent of this commission to propose a uniform alternate rotation for quorum and voting rewrite of the ordinance, of our current code?
Yeah, why not? Why would we not?
I don't know, I don't know whether that conflicts with state law in certain cases or not, but I don't have a problem with the policy.
Is it the intent of the commission to allow the City Attorney to bring back what they feel is appropriate for judicial?
Let's see if we can solve this.
And non- quasi-judicial. Go ahead, City Attorney.
Jake, turn the mic on.
Turn your mic on.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This board is the only board in our code that has that requirement currently, where an alternate member from the same district is seated to fill in.
I don't know how that got in.
And as I recall, at the time, there was some unique composition to this board, given the fact that typically all of our advisory boards have a five-plus-two composition. Each member of the commission makes one appointment, and the mayor has two alternates as well. On this board, you have fifteen members?
Yeah.
And there was discussion at the time about any one member of the commission having a majority on the board itself. The mayor has four appointments to this board in particular, and the discussion, as I recall, was to only have alternates serve from that district to ensure that the commission was equally represented.
I don't actually recall that, but okay. All right, well, let's fix it.
Yeah, this is the only board that has that specific requirement.
Okay. Mayor, do you want to weigh in?
Yes, Vice Mayor, thank you. Good discussion. I remember when I formed this board with your approval, two thousand and eleven. It was a small board, and then about three or four years later, we increased the numbers. Now, most of the intent, what they're all saying, I believe that we ought to all get on the phone with all of the members that we appointed, because this was a hot board that everybody wanted to have formed. I would suggest, and I agree with people, to get on the phone with our appointments and say, "It's time you made the meeting." Because if there's that many, I mean, I went to the senior senator one time, and it wasn't a quorum. I would ask us all to communicate. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So, do we need a vote, or can I just say we have consensus?
Mr. Vice Mayor, if you will, it would be useful to have a motion on the floor that the item is actually, is a proper item on the agenda to take action, it's simply direction to us on the record to proceed.
Okay. Members of the public, any discussion? Seeing none, let's have the clerk call the roll, please.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Saipal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor Orgeron?
Yes.
Okay, we have just a couple more items. Reports of the League, Mayor, do you have anything for the League?
No, we're in pretty good shape so far. By the way, I should say this. The League has asked us to support and oppose any of their Monday morning meetings, that they're coming up with the legislature that affects us, so if we can continue to do that, and, you know, send the letter or call those legislators. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Saipal, do you have anything for the League?
No, just, they're getting ready to have the general membership, Broward League's general membership. Florida League is getting ready, you know, really kind of, you know, chiming in on issues, and they will be sending out some reports on what the mayor just mentioned, on their stance on certain items and the progression of certain items, and when I get that, I will share it with City Clerk to share with you all.
All right, thanks, Commissioner. So, you're on notice. City Manager, do you have any reports?
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor. Surprised you, huh? I'd like to mention that the first meeting of April, April fifth, is the first night of Passover. My recommendation would be that we have the meeting on Tuesday, April fourth, the day before, for our first meeting.
Okay. Does anyone have any issues? Mayor, do you have any issue for April fourth?
No, Vice Mayor.
Okay. City Attorney, do we need to make a motion on that?
It would be helpful for the record to direct it accordingly.
So someone wants to move April?
Thank you.
By Castillo?
Second.
Second by Saipal. Discussion, City Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Castillo? Commissioner Saipal?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor Orgeron?
Yes.
City Manager, anything else?
No, no, sir, nothing.
All right, last one up. City Attorney, you got anything?
I have no reports, but thank you for the opportunity.
That was phenomenal, sir. Love those reports.
Thank you.
Congratulations, by the way, on your work with the certain lawsuit.
Thank you.
Well done.
All right, we have no commission items, no new business, no old business, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, see y'all.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Well, we're both wrong. Eight-thirty. Oh my God.
Yeah, that's how I do it. Slow.
Well, I was just thinking of this.